Good evening and welcome. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Pursuant to section thirteen of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the resolution of regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton for February two thousand and twenty-three through January two thousand and twenty-four. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution was published in the January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice of this meeting also has been posted to the municipal website, princetonnj.gov/calender. Notice that all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, transmitted to the Princeton Packet and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on Tuesday, January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. During hearings on applications for development, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Questions may be asked after an applicant's witnesses have testified. Public comment is heard by the board after an applicant's representatives have finished their presentations and have been questioned by Planning Board members and staff. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand by clicking on the reactions or raise hand icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen, or if participating by phone by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public express your views in three minutes or less. We'll have a countdown clock to help speakers keep track of time. Please note that speakers who exceed three minutes will be interrupted. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. Ms. Philip, will you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Ms. Capizoli?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Sax?
Here.
Mr. Tech Charlie?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Bodikheimer? Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Um, okay, let's go straight to announcements. Um, Justin? I think you have a couple of things.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So the master plan, adopted master plan has been posted online with the revisions that the board made at the hearing. That can be found at princetonnj.gov on our Planning Board, Planning Department, and Master Plan pages, as well as the Engagement Hub is still live, engage.pristinemasterplan.org, and it's right at the top there. So we're doing everything we need to do to, to follow up on that and use that as our master plan. It is in effect now. There was a zoning board case last night where one of the applicant planners used the plan. In my memo tonight, we use the plan and we'll continue using this plan, adopted plan going forward.
Okay.
Uh, I think there was, there, if nobody has any questions about the master plan.
Owen has his hand up.
Mm-hmm. Owen, you're on mute.
Thank you. Somebody had to be. Thanks, Justin. You just said something that has raised a question that I've kind of had in the back of my mind about the meeting last night and that the new master plan was used. For applications that have been in the process and are already complete, just waiting to be heard, which master plan takes precedence at this point? Is there a grandfather clause regarding the old plan that people were kind of, you know, building their, their applications around, or does everything just switch over automatically to the new plan?
Hmm. I believe everything switches over to the new plan. I'm sure there's some nuance to it if there's an application, you know, like the one that's been going on for years here. Even the planner last night kind of mentioned both plans. I get the feeling it wasn't his first time dealing with a situation like this. Jerry, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, but you know, there's nothing like the time of application rule that we have for zoning ordinances.
Okay.
You know, similar to the master plan.
Right. It's the plan in place at the time the decision is made by, by the board that applies. I could see somebody making an argument that in a very unusual case, such as an application that's been going on for years, maybe the different rules apply, but there's really no case law on that. And it is the, there's no grandfathering.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions on the master plan? Okay, and so a week ago, um, at this meeting, I discussed the application at forty forty-two North Tulane. Just in conversations with some of the board members individually, I think there are still some questions about that and how, you know, really what's going on there, how the approvals apply. So if anyone had any questions, you know, I'd be happy to, to take them for the benefit of the board.
Owen?
Okay, I'll go again. So, um, first of all, you know, my, the explanation last week about what happened with that, you know, it, what I heard was that, you know, we had approved a, an application that was going to, you know, maintain quite a bit of the building as per the overlay that the applicant was, was applying for, was it was going to use. And they just kind of went ahead and took down more of the building than they were entitled to according to that. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. They took down more of it without pulling any permits, so we didn't have a chance to catch them.
Okay.
They, they basically took down half the, half the building plus, plus a little porch area, I guess. When I think what they had permission to remove was the little porch.
Right.
So it was not a, it was not a minor overstep. It was, it was quite a, it was a significant thing.
And I'm not going to try to get into any explanation for why they, they would do that, but what does that do to the status of the application? Obviously negates the overlay that they were going to apply, but what happens with the, the application itself? I mean, do they have to? There was a, I guess, a stop work order put on and, you know, does everything, you know, does the, the property just kind of stay as is until they put in for a new application?
So they've put in an application for an administrative waiver to demolish the remainder of the building. Staff has signed off on that.
Okay, is that based on safety issues or?
It's their desire now to do so. Yep, yep. So.
And I mean, sorry to interrupt, but it's their desire and it's also their right. Is that fair to say?
Yes, yeah, I think that's fair to say. Um, you know, thinking of another application, we had the one at Greg's Corner not too long ago, and ultimately that was abandoned. So an applicant doesn't have to follow through with their approval for a variety of reasons. You know, there could be a financial change. They could, you know, sell the property, whatever the case might be. And ultimately, they would need to come back to the board for whatever would go up there. But at this time, uh, you know, they haven't come in with that. So that's why you're not seeing, a lot of times the demolition is, is with the application because you need to demo a building to put up another one. They're just not doing that this way this time.
Okay. Well, I just hope that it's not a, a common thing that people just, you know, get an application and then go further than the conditions that were implied by it.
Hmm. Yeah, it's the first time I've seen this happen. Ms. Sax?
Um, yeah, I, I certainly don't want to defend that action, but we're not actually, we don't seem to be, I think it's important to understand the full context of what happened, which was that they did have a letter from their engineer when they went in, as is the case with many historic buildings. The, it was structurally unsound and they, they, our staff did, you know, David, let me just finish.
It's not, what you're saying is not accurate, Mia.
Okay, well, there was a, look, I don't want to get into defending them, but it wasn't like they felt that there were, it wasn't like they just decided to, oh, we're going to take down a bunch more. There were, there were structural or safety. David can go into the detail of, you know, there was an engineering, their, their engineer basically said that, you know, that, that they needed to take down more. And I think that our staff acknowledged that ultimately there did need to be taken more needed to be taken down. I think the lesson for us is when this was approved, you know, we all, I think we expressed concerns about what was called, I can't, I can't remember the name of it, but basically, you know, it complied with the, the overlay with, with the, I think, the letter of the overlay, but not the spirit of the overlay. But when they went in, there were, there were reasons why they had to do what they had to do. They were fined. The point I want to make is that, you know, what's missing here is, I think, and I think we should all be aware that their plan, from what I understand now, is to do, I think, rather than taking advantage of the overlay, which would generate the affordable units, their plan now is to just go with, I guess, you know, a smaller number of just market rate units, which is, I'm disappointed in that. And, you know, I, I think that's unfortunate. And I do hope that our staff can work with the applicant to figure out a way to move beyond this. This was very unfortunate. I think there were, yeah, I just, I think, I think it's more complicated than what has been elaborated on, on, in, in this conversation. And I also feel, I feel like we're, there's nobody, there's no attorney from the other side representing their perspective on this, which also seems a bit unfair. And, and I do not want to be in the position, this is very uncomfortable for me. I don't want to defend. But since, you know, I feel like this was a rather simplistic presentation, so I just, to be fair, have to say that I think this is more complex than what has been presented here, so.
Hmm, okay. Uh, Mr. Cohen, do you want to add anything?
Uh, not on the public record, because I think it's inappropriate to be having this kind of conversation in this venue. But I would be happy to talk to any individual members of the board who want a little bit more detail about what happened. That's, I'd like to leave it that way.
And I agree, it's inappropriate, and I'm not sure, I just don't think in general it's something that even should be raised in this context, because it leaves sort of situation. So I think it was.
And I think we sort of went further down the rabbit hole than, than was intended by, by Owen's question, although I don't mean to put words in his mouth. Uh, Owen, you have your hand up again?
Yes, I know. I just wanted to reiterate that, you know, I was not looking for a history of the background of the property or anything. I was asking a process question. I, I tried to ask a process question and perhaps it didn't quite come out that way because I didn't understand how an administrative waiver is is given out what happens in situations such as this and kind of more importantly, if it happens often, and if it's something that, you know, the staff has to be aware of. But be that as it may, I, you know, have the answer that I wanted from this, so thank you.
Um, okay, other announcements? Justin, do you have anything else?
I don't have any others, except last year we had a planning board retreat at the beginning of the year. I think we should start thinking about if we want to do that and then when it might be. Last year it was late January, kind of half-day retreat in person. So our office would be very happy to coordinate that again.
Yeah, I would like to do that. I hope the board wants to do that. We'll have a few new members next starting in January, so we should wait until then to to settle on a date. But I would invite board members, if there are particular topics or issues that you think should be covered at a half-day retreat meeting in person, that it would be good to to let Justin know about that so that the office, the planning office can begin to pull together a an agenda. Okay? Um, other, other announcements? Well, I just want to say folks might, might notice the absence on the agenda of resolutions of, of of thanks and praise for members of the board who, for whom this is, tonight is their last meeting. Zenon is, is leaving the board. Tim Quinn is leaving the board. Tim made very clear, unequivocally clear that we should in no way recognize him with some kind of resolution or whatnot, and I respect that very much, but I did want to just note what a great colleague and friend he has been as vice chair to me. And, and I will miss him very much. So, um, I could go on and on about his perspective and his knowledge and all of those things that should be in a resolution, but are not. And I see he's turned off his camera. I hope he hasn't actually left the meeting. If he has, then my bad.
I don't see him.
Oh, gosh. Well, he'll, he'll come back soon.
Louise, you made him feel self-conscious.
I see, you know, all right. Um,
And since you mentioned.
He was serious about not being recognized. I don't even have anything on paper. David?
Since you mentioned both Tim and Zenon, I'd also like to thank Phil Chow, who is leaving us as well.
Yes. Um, and Phil is, Phil has, has already left the building, so to speak. He, the last meeting or the, the meeting on the thirtieth was his last meeting and, and, but I'm glad you did that, David. He's, he's been terrific also.
Tim's back.
Good. Um, I don't think we have any subcommittee reports.
We just like.
We have two hands.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm sorry. Owen, Owen O'Donnell, and then Zenon.
Thank you. I just, you know, have a, a short story about when I first joined the board. My third or fourth meeting, I don't think I had asked a single question yet. And it was a university application about a parking lot. And I took it upon myself to ask a question about electric vehicle charging stations. And everybody looked at me like, but that's Zenon's territory.
You asked his question.
I want to both thank Zenon for teaching me and, and apologize to him for stepping on his toes.
With the first question you ever asked. Then, um.
That's, that's certainly okay, Owen. And I hope that you'll continue to ask those questions in my absence. I, I feel like, you know, it, it was sort of my place in the beginning. You know, I, I kind of had a thing and, you know, my wife kind of always would joke around, aren't you going to mention EV charging stations? So, but you know, I feel like over the course of the time or my time on the board, I feel like a lot of the things that I would mention got brought up by other members of the board. And I felt like I didn't really have to speak as much, which I felt pretty good about. And I think that the, the PEC also would agree with me in terms of, you know, feeling good that this board really takes, takes in consideration, you know, the, the, I guess, priorities of the Environmental Commission. So I kind of joke around that it's, it's sort of like the Environmental Planning Board in a sense, because I think everybody, everybody now on the board really does think about this stuff and I appreciate that. I, I think that we've come a long way, you know, in terms of, you know, how the board talks about these things and also, you know, you know, how we kind of look at, at site plans and, and how it's become sort of standard practice to do all this stuff. So I feel like I'm leaving in a, in a really good place. You know, same with the master plan. You know, I'm, I'm very proud of what we've accomplished for this master plan and I, I really commend Louise, Chair Will, and then, and Tim for, for leader, leading that effort. I think that, you know, it was, it was a good product and I think Princeton will be better because of it. And I think I really appreciate that. I know that Louise, you know, and, and others probably, probably got annoyed by me nagging about the, the master plan so much, but, um, yeah, it, it finally happened and, and I think it's a great product, so everybody should be proud. I actually, um, I, I looked up, you know, when, when I first got on the board in, I guess, two thousand and seventeen, I believe, I, I actually made Lee Solo put in the, in the reexamination report, you know, we will consider looking up or consider redoing the master plan. So it, it was, it took me six years to finally, finally make it happen, but it, it, you know, it took a lot of people. There was, there was a lot of stars that were in alignment, so I appreciate everybody for, for, you know, working on that and seeing it through.
Thank you, Zenon. You, you definitely moved the needle.
I appreciate that. So, yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't sure whether I should make, make that announcement, but yeah, I mean, uh, it's, uh, it was a tough decision to, to, you know, leave. I mean, the planning board has become such a huge part of my life, same with the Environmental Commission. But, um, yeah, I, I felt like it was, it was maybe time to, to switch it up a little bit and let other people have a, have a chance at it and, you know, get some, get some new voices here. But I'll, I'll still be around, so, you know, feel free to, to reach out and, you know, maybe I'll, I'll come testify at some sort of, some meetings. We'll see. Yeah, so.
Well, you're always welcome. And we'll, we'll hear your remarks in the order in which your hand was raised. So, um, thank you so much, Zenon, for everything that you've done and and for the incredible amount of work that you put into the green building and environmental sustainability element of the master plan, which of course had a big impact on, on the work product we approved last week, two weeks ago. So, um, many thanks. Props. Um, okay, let us, any other, any other announcements? Okay. Um, next up on the agenda is a resolution findings of fact about Galaxy Tile of Princeton. This was a preliminary and final major site plan for a property at eight twenty State Road, block eight oh five, lot four. This is file number P twenty-three twenty-three dot thirty-four seven, three four seven P. Um, any comments or suggested edits or questions about this resolution, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I had two very, very minor suggestions. One on page three, it refers to a memo being prepared or a memo for Justin Lesko as opposed to a memo from Justin Lesko. Uh, so that's a typo, I think.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah. And on page nine, in the, at the very top and under the discussion of traffic effects, the final sentence says trucks exiting the site will not be able to use Cherry Valley Road as it becomes residential in character west of the site. And I think that that gives the wrong impression, saying that we, you know, called for no left turns because of the residential character of the road, and it really did not have to do with that. So I would strike that last clause and just say trucks exiting the site will not be able to use Cherry Valley Road.
Okay. So are you on page nine?
Oh, yeah, top on page nine.
Okay. And just, and take out as becomes residential in character west of the site.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you, David.
And otherwise.
I mean, trucks exiting the site will have to use Cherry Valley Road because it is the only exit from the site, but they'll have to turn right.
Right.
I mean, so.
And the statement was the road becomes residential in character to the west. In other words, as you turn left.
Yes.
It implies that the reason we're not letting trucks turn left is because of the residential character, and that was not the basis for that decision.
Hmm.
It had to do with the truck's maneuvering abilities.
I just think it needs to be worded such that it acknowledges that trucks exiting most exit to the east or to the right or something like that, rather than that they can't use Cherry.
Yes, that, that was the change I suggested. Keep in the statement that they won't be able to turn left.
Will not be able to, will not be able to use Cherry Valley Road by turning left.
Right. But leave, leave out the bit about the residential character.
Good, thank you.
Good. Any other comments or suggested edits or questions? And seeing none, would someone like to move the resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Cohen, seconded by Mr. Taylor.
I don't have Jack as being present for Galaxy.
Not proud.
Okay, okay. Thanks, Mr. McGowan. Roll call carried.
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Cue. Next up, we have a courtesy review for Princeton Housing Authority at One Reading Circle, block forty-two oh one, lot twenty-one. This is file number P twenty-two twenty-three twenty-three C. Uh, Mr. Lesko, do you want to set the table?
Certainly, I'm happy to. I see Mr. Taylor's hand is up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jack.
Why don't you set the table? I'm sure my, my question will flow from that.
Okay. Jerry, do I need to be sworn in for a courtesy review?
No, we don't swear anybody in for courtesy reviews.
Okay, um, so I, so before you tonight is a courtesy review for an application or a site plan application courtesy review from the Princeton Housing Authority for a minor improvement to convert an existing community room at One Reading Circle to allow for preschool use. Reading Circle has ten residential buildings with a hundred low and moderate income apartments. And this existing community room that they're looking to convert to preschool. I should mention that Derek, Dan, and myself issued a joint memo for this, so I welcome them to jump in at any time or after. The reason that you're hearing this as a courtesy review is because of a section of the municipal land use law that allows for an agency like the Housing Authority to come in for a courtesy review. The Housing Authority has a seven-member board that was established by municipal ordinance, and though it's independent of the municipality, it's an agency of it regulated by the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, and the NJ Department of Community Affairs. So what they're looking to do is partner with the public schools to offer full day pre-kindergarten by reusing and renovating the community room with funding from the municipality's allocation of a HUD grant. And if I could share my screen, I'll show an aerial of the the site.
As Justin's doing that, the other side of that is the board does not have jurisdiction over the application as a site plan application.
Gary, may I, may I follow that with a, just a practical question from my, my perspective?
Sure.
What, if any, under the circumstances, the circumstances of a courtesy review, are the legal implications of our consideration and our comments minuted as a result of what we're going to do tonight?
Well, we, we can certainly make recommendations to, to the Housing Authority, but that's, but they're not bound by them. So they're very, very limited.
Limited.
I, I think ultimately, the way that we should end this review is probably with some sort of memo that could come from.
memo that could come from me or my office of your recommendations. Um, you know, if there are specific ones or if it's in favor um for both our records and for the Housing Authority's records.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so you can see from the aerial imagery here, uh Reading Circle is off of Mount Lucas Road. Uh, to the south, uh, you'll see Ewing Road and below that, North Harrison. Um, to the west, uh Route two oh six. Um, and like I said, there are ten buildings on the site. Um, I will zoom in and Jerry, I don't know if we need to mark this as an exhibit.
No, we don't.
Okay. Uh, so when you make an immediate left into Reading Circle, uh, there's this small building by a parking lot. Um, I'm using February uh aerial imagery because the tree cover is off, so you can see uh the area. Uh, and what the Housing Authority is looking to do is renovate this uh a room in this building uh and and some other just interior renovations, kid-friendly ones um to allow for uh a the pre-kindergarten program of up to fifteen children. Um, they still may use the community room uh for non-kindergarten when it's not in use. Um, and I believe for some of their state certifications, they need to put a four-foot fence around this kind of half-moon area uh that's already uh, it it has concrete on it now. Parts of it will be uh taken up to put soft mulch. Um, and an additional uh minor area uh would be added um to put a gate in. So uh that it'd be about uh forty-eight square feet. Um, but ultimately, it would be a a net reduction in impervious coverage of four hundred square feet. Uh, the fence will be black vinyl chain link uh and four feet tall. Um, there's an elevation change uh below uh kind of the circle and the grass below it. Uh, that's why there's a rail there now that would be replaced by a fence um for the security uh and certification reasons. Uh, a new HVAC condenser will also be installed um as well as the interior renovation. So uh our staff comments um were uh, well, one, this, the master plan reflects um that Princeton should be a global center for educational achievement, committed to providing equal and equitable access to its opportunities and amenities. Uh, the community facilities element talks about uh providing high-quality educational facilities to meet the needs of Princeton's residents um and to provide outstanding public school facilities uh and have them located within uh areas that maximize walkability and access uh which this would uh would do um as well as maximize existing facilities and land and undertake cost-effective building improvements. Uh, adaptive reuse of buildings is also mentioned uh in response to the changing climate and to further the community, community's desire for environmental sustainability um and avoiding additional impacts on on the landscape and the environment. Uh, and that was in the green building and and environmental sustainability element. Um, our other comments are that uh the applicant uh who can speak next more directly to what they provided um should advise if the tenants at Redd- Reading Circle uh have been informed of this application or the meeting. Um, while noting that there are no notice requirements for a uh a courtesy review and also under the municipal land use law, um notification does not go to renters. It goes to property owners, which is something that's come up in the past. Uh, that's why I bring that up. Um, uh, an additional comment is the applicant should describe more of how the fifteen students and the up to three uh teachers and teaching assistants expected will arrive at the site. Um, will they have dedicated parking spaces? Will they arrive uh by bus, you know, through the uh partnership with the public schools? Um, will they, you know, potentially be residents uh of uh the ten buildings around it? Um, I should note there is a bus stop uh within the circle as well, not necessarily for the the pre-K kids. Um, but perhaps for the teachers or their parents as well. Um, and then just lastly, the applicant should address any uh just any security uh access issues with the community room if uh it's to be used for other things during off hours. So will they, you know, uh allow for uh, will they be locking everything up uh and allow the the tenants to use it or what's gonna uh happen there? So with that being said, um, I'll ask uh Dan and Derek if they have any additional comments. Uh, and then I'm happy to turn it over to uh Mr. Clark, Ms. Spitz and Mr. Bejwick uh from the Housing Authority.
Dan, anything to add or Derek Bridger?
Uh, no additional comments. Nope. Thank you, Justin.
And I assume nothing from Derek since he has not turned on his camera or unmuted himself. So um, nope, it's all perfect.
All good. No, thank you. I'm here.
I can sure you were there. All right, great. Um, so who will take the lead on behalf um of the Housing Authority? Is that you, Mr. Clark?
That is our chairwoman, Felicia Spitz.
Oh, Spitz.
I would be, I would be happy to chime in, but I always go with my boss first.
I saw, I saw your, your camera come off first, so I I met, met no disrespect, Felicia Spitz. Um, go right, go right ahead. Good.
Um, so Justin, you may have to remind me of the questions. Um, but uh one I I recall was about um how the students will get there. And and for any of the um fifteen students who are not our tenants, um, the district will be busing them. Um, the teachers and aides, because the age of the children, um, there, there does have to be um other adults than the driver on the bus. Um, I, I'm not sure whether those um are the same aides that will be in the classroom. Um, but we have ample parking, you know, in the event that none of the the aides that um ride the bus are the ones that will be in the classroom. Um, we have plenty of parking to accommodate three cars.
And the ages of the children you referenced, um, are they three and four-year-olds?
Yes. Yes. Oh, and um the other question was, have we noticed tenants? Um, and we have, we have um a a monthly um tenants meeting in addition to our monthly Board of Commissioners meeting. Um, and the tenants um not only are aware, but they are fully uh supportive of the program because they, they know that their kids, um, you know, start off behind in kindergarten and stay behind for their entire public school career. So they're really hoping that uh this, this um universal full-day pre-kindergarten program will start addressing that achievement gap.
Um, great, and the, the other question that um that Justin raised had to do with um security access to the classroom and if it, if it's used as a community room during off-hours, uh, you know, how, how is that? Are are all the school things put away? I don't mean to put words in your mouth, Justin, if you want to elaborate on that question.
No, you're spot on.
Uh, yeah, um, the, so the room will not be um used during the school year by tenants. We have another um tenant's uh community room that um our tenants will have access to during the school year. Um, so it would only be during the summer that we might have other people in there. But um in all honesty, I'd love to see a summer um program in there too for the kids. So um, I, I'm hoping that there's no access while, while running this program to tenants. Um, the buildings are always secured. We have cameras in them and we're actually putting in a a buzzer door um to ensure safe pickup and drop-off um should any parent need to to come and pick up their kid. Um, we, we will have the same um kind of safety uh system in place as the public schools have now.
Thank you.
Um, I didn't notice uh from the plans whether there was a, any um play area for the children. Is there, is there a plan for that or is there an existing playground that they would use?
Yeah, that um, that kind of half-moon area where we're putting that four-foot fence um and mulching part of it, um, that's actually gonna become their play area. So on the the concrete part, they'll be able to use little push toys. Um, and then in the mulched area, um, they can have like a little sandbox or um, you know, building toys that that they can play with over there and that will put in a little um a storage box uh while they're not in use.
Uh, Felicia, do you have that exhibit that you can put up so you can show the board what you're referring to?
Um, Justin, I'm standing in the hallway at school. Could you put that um, the uh aerial you had up before?
Certainly. Would you like the aerial or or would you like the um?
I think the site plan would be best for talking about the playground.
Yep, I agree.
Thanks, Justin. Sorry.
Not a problem.
Yeah, so you, you see where um in the center of of that, yeah, right where Justin's cursor is. Um, that's the play area.
Ah, okay, okay.
Yeah, so we're gonna convert that existing.
I thought that was part of the, okay.
Yeah, that's why we need the fence there is so the kids don't fall off because it's raised about four feet from the ground and the the railing that's there is more like a jungle gym than a a safety structure.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, is there any, any other testimony that um the Housing Authority or your um, that, that any of you associated with the Housing Authority wanna give?
Chair?
Yes, Mr. Clark.
Hi, just, it's John Clark. While this is a courtesy review, we obviously um wanna form a relationship and make sure that we're in complete communication with the town. Uh, this has been a great exercise for us. Um, you probably haven't seen a lot of the Housing Authority in the past, uh, but you will be seeing a lot of us in the future. Um, so we wanna make sure that um, you know, we are, we are good stewards and partners throughout the the process here. So any recommendations you or your team have, we will obviously take to heart. Um, but this will not be the the last time you see us. So I wanna introduce ourselves. You're gonna be seeing our new logo around town. You're gonna be seeing a lot more changes and I'm hopeful that uh they're positive and that people will be excited about some of the changes that are coming. Other than that, our architect and engineer, Mike Bejiak, is here. Be happy to answer any of the technical questions.
Um, well, thank you for that very much. Um, we have two board members with hands up, so I'm gonna call on them, Mr. O'Donnell and then Mr. Texarni and then Mr. Cohen.
Thanks.
Um, and then we'll hear from Mr. Bejiuk.
Justin, can you real quickly put up that last slide? Great, thank you. At the bottom of the semicircle, is that, is that going to be a gate there? Or a fence?
Yeah.
The fence will continue to that point?
Yeah, so it's, it's basically gonna connect to um the building so that there's no way a kid can escape. Um, but we are required to have two, two exits. So we have to, we have to allow um an adult in two different places to to open it. But yeah, it's, it's all um connected so that there's no, there's no easy escape route.
Okay, is that, is that going to be the entrance for the children as well?
Um, no, so the, the front of the building, um, there's a, a door um where we're gonna change it out and put a window in there. Um, so you can see directly from the community room to the parking lot where the bus will drop off.
Okay.
Um, and and the kids will come in that door on that little sidewalk that you see from the parking lot up to the building.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Um, Zenon? And then Dave?
So uh, of course, I'm gonna have to ask EV charging stations. It's not really related to too much to the, to the building, but um I had to do it. Um, but uh, you know, I I'm assuming that there's gonna be uh, you know, people working there and uh they might need a place to charge their car. Um, and then there's, you know, also many people living at Reading Circle. I know that we're not talking about that, but um I was just wondering if there's any plans for um installing EV charging stations or providing access to uh charging um in the parking lot.
Um, there is not at this time and um in all honesty, um, we're more focused on um like bike racks. Um, many of our tenants can't afford to have a car at all. So it, it's, that's why we have so many parking spots available for the teachers because so few of our tenants have cars. Um, and this is a senior area. So um many of the people who live there additionally, you know, have mobility problems. So it's just on, on our radar, um EV charging stations are not where we need to invest transportation resources. Um, it's more in ramps and bicycle racks um than than EV.
Okay, well, I mean, there might be some people that might want to have EVs in the future. So just consider, you consider having that and we're thinking about that in the future.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I wanted to ask a little bit about the soft surface play area. Number one, you know, mulch is not really an accessible surface. Um, there are other soft surfaces where, you know, for specifically for playgrounds where you can take a wheelchair, uh, but you can also, you know, fall down without getting hurt, stuff like that. So I wanted to ask, you know, whether that was looked at, whether it's cost prohibitive. Obviously, it costs more than mulch based on your budget. But also, you know, the exact dimensions of what you're proposing as soft surface versus hard surface. Um, because you don't provide a layout of equipment, you know, it's hard to tell whether the amount of soft surface you're proposing is the right amount and the layout is the right layout. Unless we could, or at least you should be looking at what you actually wanna put in the soft surface area to figure out the exact right configuration of it. So that's just a suggestion for you going forward.
Um, so I wanna say it was last um a year ago, the summer, I met with um the Department of Children and Family Services um to kind of get them to uh do a courtesy review of the site for school. Um, with all of these satellite um classrooms because, because we aren't the only organization that will have a satellite classroom um with the school district. Um, the school does not want to put kids with uh mobility issues in a satellite location. Um, so um, the, the surface choice that they recommended was mulch because of the price. Um, uh, and because, you know, this is, this is not what we, we do. We're, we're trying to partner here to help out. Um, you know, if this became a long-term permanent thing, um, I think the school district could maybe get some additional funding um to swap out that soft surface. Um, but you know, our, our hope is that um this will be temporary. And, you know, given our resources and the CDBG funds, um, this is a really great solution that, you know, provides the requirement, which is two different play surfaces. Um, so we'll, we'll certainly, you know, I'd love to have cord rubber there, but it is really expensive. Um, so I looked into that and it just, you know, we need additional funding to to make that happen.
Maybe your architect wants to comment about the layout, the specific layout that he, that was chosen.
I think that's a great segue to, to hear from Mr. Bejiuk. Am I pronouncing your name properly?
Yeah. Yeah, you're good. Thank you. Uh, thank you for uh letting us uh come to you today. Um, yeah, as far as the play area goes, we have, uh, as uh Ms. Spitz has said, the, the state has looked at it. Um, we're approved with it. Um, we weren't looking at doing any type of equipment just because there is other factors that fall into place when you start getting the equipment on-site. Um, so it would be all smaller push or um uh toy-type uh uses that'll be in this playground. Uh, the arrangement actually isn't, is actually beneficial in a sense that um kids could be actually spread out a little more and instead of being right on top as if it was a, just a small rectangle-type playground. This is actually allowing, um, if you remember correctly on that plan, it's, it's almost an L shape. So it actually allows the kids to have some of their own areas of play. So we do have the hard surfaces, which is a little larger than it needs to be. And then we also created the soft. So we do have the hard surfaces, which is, uh, a little larger than it needs to be, and then we also create the soft surface, so. Um, and also my, some of my past experience with playgrounds is the mulch is actually acceptable ADA. Um, we've built, I've actually built a couple of the larger back when the pole. It's often pole playgrounds were, uh, being built, um, I was involved with some of those in Winslow and over in Gloucester Township and. They have indicated mulch is an acceptable wheelchair accessible, uh, surface, so, um. You know, we, the renovations within the building is to make it all, uh, accessible for younger kid ages. So, um, we are looking into, we also have incorporated that also.
Okay, are there any other comments, um, that you would like to make about the plan or? Anything to add to what Mr. Clark or Ms. Spitz said?
Ms. Spitz has covered a very good, um, portion of it, uh, as you mentioned, there will be a. And, uh, entrance on the bottom plan that you saw there, uh, for drop-off. And then we do have the existing glass door entrance that'll have the buzzer on it for, uh, any type of parent pickup. That this way allows the staff inside to be able to see who's standing outside, so they're just not opening up to a stranger.
Uh, other questions or comments from board members?
Um, I have a quick.
Mm-hmm, Julie?
Um, I just wanted to ask, are the Reading Circle, um, kids, uh, prioritized? Over other kids, I mean, just making sure.
Yes, and, and that's kind of our one, um, win here is that, uh. Both here and at the Pennell Center, our kids will, will not ever be on a waitlist.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, and, and some. Yeah, context for that, um, there are like a hundred and fifty kids on the waitlist. Um, right now, so, you know, being able to offer this classroom and, and the, the other two at the Pennell Center, which, um. Didn't come before the planning board, uh, because that's already a, a dedicated learning center. Um, that's forty-five kids, so we're gonna take a big, um, chunk out of the, the district waitlist.
That's terrific. Um. Just a quick word about mulch. Um, all mulch, mulch is not created equal, so just be, just be mindful of, you know. Not using dyed mulch, not using the. Sometimes can be really cheap, you know, um, ground-up rubber tires.
With the steel reinforcement in it, yeah.
And goodness knows what else, um. Yeah, just the, just plain aged mulch, I mean, I, I, whatever is healthiest, I think that's probably healthiest, but. Um, yeah. Um, so I'm not seeing any other hands from board members, um, this is not a formal hearing, but I do want to invite. Members of the public, if anyone has comments they'd like to share. Um, we can, um, accommodate that, you'd need to raise your hand virtually by. Clicking on the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen, we have five attendees. Um, as of right this moment, nobody has raised their hands to speak to the board. Ask any questions, make comments about this. Okay, seeing none, I will move back, uh, invite more, more comments. Or thoughts, um, from board members? Well, I love this. I mean, I think it's great, I, I, and, and I, you know, I, I just, obviously, early childhood. Education is so, so important and, um. I just think that it's wonderful that a facility like this can be so convenient, um, to. Folks at, um, who live at, um, Housing Authority homes. And, uh, so thank you for making the effort to make it happen.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Um, other? Other anything, Ms. Capel?
I just wanna say too that I really support it, um. I've known a ton of kids that live at Reading Circle and the more resources we can give them, the better. So, a hundred percent, I love it.
Right. A- any other thoughts about, um? Things for Mr. Lesko to put in his, what looks like a brief and positive memo? Uh. Going once, going twice? Okay, I think, um, I think you have nothing but. Um, positive thoughts coming your way, um.
Thank you.
We really do appreciate your, your work and your attention to this really important need on behalf of the. Um, youngest, um, and therefore in many ways most vulnerable of your, um.
Right.
Of the people that you serve, so, thank you.
Thank you.
So, um. I guess you guys can, are free to, yeah, sign off, so long. Um, and, uh, I don't think there's anything else on our agenda. Just wish everyone a very, very, very happy holiday filled with. Um. Relaxing times and family, both blood relatives and chosen family. And, um, joyful times.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, would you entertain a motion to adjourn?
I would. Uh, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everyone.
Take care, everyone.
See ya.
Good night.
Bye.
See you next week.
You had to say that, didn't you, Julie?